I can call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't know why I moved out of the way. I'm short enough, you can see over my head.
I gotta get out of the side. Clerk Cody, it's nice to have you here at the beginning, it's really nice. And with that, would you do a real call of the Board, please?
Supervisor Malky?
Here.
Treasurer Rice?
Here.
Trustee Bills?
Yep.
Trustee Brown?
Here.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Trustee Therry?
Present.
Clerk Cody, here. Everybody's here.
We have, oh, yeah, excuse me. Approval of agenda, take any motions regarding that?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion by Cody, support by Smith. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda is approved unanimously. We have no presentations nor public hearings this evening, so that'll bring us to public comment. Public comment's restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. Note, if you choose to address the public, do state your name and address for the record. And with that, at 7:01, we'll open up public comment. And just for note of the books, we have no one attending virtually.
Right.
Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close public comment at 7:01 PM. I'm not aware of any proposed closed session. Stop me if you feel so inclined. Otherwise, it'll take us to item nine on our agenda. Current list of boards and commissions. At our last meeting, we appointed Mr. Choudary to the EDA. He's our only applicant currently for the ZBA. If this board would like to nominate him for the ZBA, you certainly have the opportunity to do that, but it'd be nice to get somebody else on there, even though that's such an important board. Having one person serve on three boards is not certainly my preference.
I agree. Should we take some time to push that a little bit more and then, I mean, how long am I allowed to write?
Okay. So let me lift that up again for everybody that technically we have the open seat, I think it's number four seat. And then ideally, Trustee Brown is alternate two right now. It's probably overserved already. Have you had to sit yet? Oh, okay. So ideally, we really have two seats open. Anything else on that? Seeing none, let's go to Board Member Reports. Trustee Brown?
Yes, regular meeting, just this Monday, Mount Pleasant City Commission, June 12th. Very short meeting. Introduced the new city treasurer and Assistant Finance Director, Chris Whitmer. Might know her from the accounting department, Isabella County. She's worked up there for a while, so they got a great person there. So, and the recognition of Juneteenth Celebration Day. And then the only other thing was new business, and they were having some discussion on, and I think this is, this kind of sparked an interest for me because we've talked about this, being able to get out and reach our constituents and see how they're feeling, what they're doing, maybe talking to them. We've talked about the recycling time where people get to come in and trustees get to talk to the community. Well, what the city's doing is they're thinking about setting up or in discussion, I don't know where this'll go, there was some interest. It was a discussion on city information engagement booth at the Island Park for the farmer's market. And then they were gonna have volunteers from the city, different boards, all their boards, any board, to talk to the community and also see if there would get volunteers for their boards and get some interest in their boards. That may be interesting to this board to maybe think about or talk about. I thought it was very interesting because we're always fighting for volunteering on boards. Most of the people, constituents that I talked to was like, wow, I didn't even know, didn't even know. Well, see how many people come to the meetings or how many people maybe watch it. They're not getting that information out there, so I thought it was a pretty neat idea to throw out there and just talk about it. I don't know if it'll go anywhere in the city or here, but something to think about, you know, getting out in front of the community. That's all, that's all.
Stay ahead.
Awesome. Yeah, I like it. Trustee Bills?
Yes, I attended the Isabella County Board of Commissioners meeting on June 6th. And of note, the Resolution Services Center Executive Director Lisa Bonney made a presentation. She talked all about how she assists citizens to mediate conflicts, and she takes care of thousands of these things every year that don't have to end up going to court, which is really cool. It's a cool service to have, and I just think, you know, I lift that up. But she serves six counties, and it's a nonprofit organization that she runs. That's all I got today.
Awesome. Trustee Smith?
I wasn't here for the last meeting, but prior to that, I went to the Council of Governments with Trustee Bills, and she probably already did a report on it, but very informative meeting. I was really glad I went. Animal Control did a great presentation on the number of calls and their responsibilities, duties, their limitations, how stretched thin they are and everything like that, so it was a great presentation. Plus, just kind of being in the same room with all the other officials from around the county, I thought it was very informative.
Treasurer Rice?
We haven't had any sidewalk and pathways meetings in a while, but it is tax time. Yay for that, so.
Seems like it's always tax time.
Death is tax.
Never skips that table, it's always there.
Big grin.
Lack of sleep. So that will be, those will be going out July 1st. They'll be in mailboxes, so.
And I did neglect to mention the sidewalk committee, there's a seat open for that as well.
Yes, there is.
Clerk Cody. Trustee Therry?
Planning Commission meets next Tuesday, so hopefully the next meeting I'll have something to say.
Awesome. EDA meets next Tuesday, just before Planning Commission. Otherwise, I have nothing else to report. So moving on, consent agenda. I do have one question about one item in there, and if you'd like me to request pulling it out, I can do that. Otherwise, if you grant me that one question after any motions, I could do that.
Good with the one question.
Yes, absolutely.
Happy and entertaining motions regarding consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda, support.
Motion by Smith, support by Brown. Discussion, I guess, counts payable, the warrants. All good?
Best of my ability, everything is fine.
I did warn our Public Works Director that I would ask this question. So this has to do with the Water Service Franchise Agreement on Mamie Street. In fact, the resident that has applied for this is here, and I just, as I was reading through the agreement, sometimes the legal ease doesn't always stick with me very well, and I just didn't quite understand Article Four, and so I just wanted to ask you, like, in layman's term, what does Article Four mean?
So if you read through Article Four, upon termination of this agreement for any reason, any water lines laid by the grantee, which in this case is the city of Mount Pleasant, pursuant to this franchise agreement shall become the sole property of the grantor, which is Union Township. So that first line means that if the city were to lay a water line to service this property in our right of ways, that would become our property. That was not already existing. And then the next part of the article is, should the grantee, which is the city of Mount Pleasant, have a water main or transmission line which is existing at the time of execution of this agreement and to which the owner of the premises being served with water taps into for water service, that in such event, such water main or transmission line shall not be conveyed to grantor, which is Union Township, which is the case. They have an existing line there that is being tapped into that will remain. Even if this agreement ends at some point, the township would not take over ownership of the city's line. And it just says shall remain the sole exclusive property of the grantee, which is the city.
And that helped me a bunch because I think where part of my confusion was, was discerning, and now I see it, now it makes sense to me, but discerning between any new, like, service lines or lines that are put in to provide the service versus the existing lines that are there. Those are what are separated in this language.
And this, the second, like, the third sentence down clarifies, you know, water main or transmission line.
Right.
So we're not talking about, like, the service lead that the customer puts into their house. We're talking about mains that are owned by either the city or the township.
Great. Thanks for entertaining me on that. Thank you, Board. Any other questions or comments on consent agenda? All in favor of approving a consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion to pass the consent agenda passes unanimously, and yours is grouped in that, so you're good to go.
Yeah, you're good to go.
Not that we're kicking you out, I'm just telling you that.
It could get boring.
Have a wonderful night.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Join us again every other Wednesday.
She has?
Yep.
Bring your friends. Bring your neighbors.
She's done that, too. That brings us to new business. Item A, approval of the bid from Peerless Midwest for well exploration activities. Mr. Stuldrer, do you have anything you'd like to introduce on this?
Thank you. Just briefly, there's a staff report on this item that begins on page 28 of your agenda packet. We're asking the Board to consider approving a bid from Peerless Midwest in the amount of $72,000, $72,073 for the completion of well exploration activities that we've been conducting over the last couple of years. This, just as a little bit of background, we're looking to add wells to the system to provide adequate water looking into the future. We've identified a potential property that the township owns roughly at Mission and Deerfield. To locate this well, we've had some engineering work done and some preliminary studies done by Gordy Frazier that were approved by the Board some time ago. The next step is to actually drill a test well and conduct some monitoring of how that water's looking and feeling and chemical analysis and all that kind of thing. This activity would be funded in part by an Eagle Source Water Protection Grant that we'd applied for and were awarded, so that grant will pay for half of the $72,000. And if this continues to move forward, we could very well see, I think, what would be then, at that time, well number 12 added into our system. And if anybody is curious, this is the same property that former trustee Hauck would talk about once in a while as a potential location for a park down there. And if you look at the map of the site that's contained in your agenda packet, the well area would be in the far southwest corner of the property, therefore allowing development, whether it's a park or a trailhead for the bike path or a township hall or a combination thereof to be located, to still be able to be located at this, on this property. You happy to answer any questions you may have? So thank you.
I'm gonna ask one that you've already answered of me, but I think it's worth y'all hearing the answer to. So I asked about that 200-foot radius around the well that's basically a protection zone. And I had asked about, and the manager's already addressed this, whether it be a trailhead or a park or some other township facility, are we precluding that use by putting this well there? The answer is no. So my follow-up question to that was, in that 200-foot radius, what are we not allowed to do? What are we allowed to do? And I don't know if you want to answer it. The answer I basically heard was,
Well, you can answer.
There are some limitations, but they're common sense stuff. You don't want to store certain chemicals.
No gas tanks or anything like that?
That kind of stuff. But if we were to put, you know, if there's a playground back there and it bordered up near there and those kinds of things that aren't gonna jeopardize the well or provide maybe an unsafe zone for somebody, that land is still available.
Cool.
So is this an additional well or are you replacing this and taking one out? Or is this just gonna be another fully operational, like?
I'll have to defer to Ms. Smith on that one.
It's a new well. We're not replacing them, we're adding well.
Oh, you're adding wells for, okay.
Well, I think we needed to add capacity anyway, so we'd have redundants, right?
Correct. We showed that we have a deficiency within five years, which is what we're hoping to address with this well. And then we may, we will have to add if we're only able to get 400 gallons a minute out of this. Depending on how a well tests out, we may be able to get more. No promises. I mean, that all goes through Eagle, but there may be additional wells later, but for the immediate, we need at least the 400 to meet our peak demands. For instance, right now, we're pumping 2.2 to 2.3 million gallons a day. And our normal pumpage is around a million gallons.
Wow. Cool.
Is that mostly business or?
It's sprinklers.
Irrigation.
Irrigation.
Oh, because.
And we do this every summer. So, and so our peak demand is based on, they don't care if you're irrigating with it or using it to live. You have to still provide that water, so.
And then this water would go to the Isabella site for treatment?
Yeah, well, yes, it would. We would tie it into a line that's over by the Mission site. And then the plan is to then take a transmission line from Mission to Isabella. We have more capacity for treatment at Isabella, and we have plans for an expansion there so that we can, as we put these wells on and need more water, we'll be able to treat that water. We have two wells at Mission, but we're only able, each is rated at 400 gallons per minute, but we only have one iron removal filter that's rated at 400 gallons per minute, so we're limited there. We alternate those wells, and then we also have wells at Isabella. We have more treatment capacity there, but as we put on more wells, we will need more treatment capacity.
So you wouldn't anticipate any issues with easement right of ways with railroad and/or 127? 27, I guess.
We would have to probably work with MDOT mainly to get over to, you know.
Go under.
Yeah, or run in the right of way for a time. We already go under the drain that's over in that area.
Oh, we do already?
See, we have, we already have some lines. We would have to get over to the Mission site, which is basically almost across the road from this, where our line runs. And then we would have to go from that location over to the Isabella site. When we put the replacement well in at Isabella, we made, we set that site up with the new well to tie in so then it can run into the building. We upsized those lines so we, because we knew that was the long-term plan.
Cool.
Fair for it.
But we will have to get it there, and that's our plan, is we'll work with MDOT. We have other lines that run in the MDOT right of ways, so, and they do allow that.
Yes, you're not anticipating issues with that, was my, kind of what I was asking.
I'm not, but I'm not gonna guarantee any.
Right.
If you'd asked me that 10 years ago, I might've said no, but today, who knows? Things seem to be a moving target, so.
Well, I'd like to make a motion. Make a motion, approve the bid from Peerless Midwest in the amount of $72,073 for the completion of the well exploration activities.
Support.
Motion by Brown, support by Bills. Any other discussion amongst ourselves or questions that weren't asked? Bless you.
I'm glad Gordy Fisher came in and explained it to us, and so we know what's going on, you know? She did a great job telling us what we're looking forward to in the future, so this is just that step to getting there.
Yeah, it was not a surprise to see this in front of us.
Not a surprise at all.
Did I hear you say you had two wells, but only one iron removal filter?
At the Mission site, yes.
So do we need to get a new iron removal filter?
Not at that site, there's no place to put it.
Oh, okay. Well, all right, I was just curious if I wouldn't just get that, okay.
Yeah, and there's, we've looked at expanding that building. Unless you build a whole new building and a whole new treatment plant, there's just no place. And when we built the Isabella site, that was laid out in a way that it can be expanded, and we can put more filters in. I don't remember, if you remember the large room that had the filters in it. We can push that out to the north, and then more filters can be put in there. And the room that's next to it where the high service pumps are at, that can also be pushed out. Water lines and things were laid out on the site to accommodate that, and then more high service pumps can go in there so we can bring more capacity. With, you know, you have to upgrade it and put more equipment and then would have to expand the building footprint, but you would not be building a whole new building.
Yeah, that's a nice building, relatively new.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approval of the bid from Peerless Midwest in the amount of $72,073 for the completion of well exploration activities, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to our fun part on our agenda. Second time around of discussing global ends, which we last discussed on April 26th. With that, just real quick, I did put at your desk, and I've lost mine already, there it is. I am not a wordsmith. I do not contend that I am, but what I did, just as a reminder, we ended up combining, or the suggestion was combine items three and four in 1.0 from safety and health to one item is health and safety. And then doing that, then, I worked on combining, at the bottom of the page, you'll see 1.3 is all scratched out. That's the original 1.3. And then on the flip side, in the back, is 1.4, that's the original. And then above those two, a new 1.3, in which I tried to use language to kind of boil it all down a little bit higher level. So I will not be offended in language suggestion changes. Hopefully, I was able to kind of capture at least to some degree what we had discussed, so. And as a reminder also, we had talked about the possibility, I gotta find it again, of dropping 1.62, which in the proposed one here is 1.5.2, which has to do with the local purchase policy. But I'm, obviously, this discussion is pretty free-form, we can go wherever we want, but I wanted to get this in front of you. Trustee Bills?
In light of the efforts to include a DEI policy, I was wondering if in 1.3, we could say residents of all ages and gender identification?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that for me, please?
1.3, the main header?
Uh-huh.
All ages and gender identification?
Oh.
Aren't they residents?
Because then are we gonna get into different, like, minority groups and different other groups? I mean, I see where you're coming from.
Okay, so you don't want to include DEI?
I'm just saying that they're all residents.
Maybe a better way to put it, I think the- Maybe a better way to put it, I think the word ages originally came in there to make sure that we're including our seniors and our youth and teenagers and middle-aged adults. What if it simplified it just to say all residents?
All residents. Yeah.
I'm not opposed to your language, but I also get Trustee Smith's point where-
We don't want to segment out, you know, any-
And it does already with age kind of here.
Yeah.
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 Just change it to all residents.
Under one point three point three, safe township assets with resources for healthy and active. I'm just trying to see, like, the wording, just, I'm just trying to get the wording on that as I was reading.
I struggled with this one. So, what my intent was, I was trying to bring in some of the ones that talked about safe roads, safe bike lanes, safe, you know? It talked about all these different things that were safe. And so, I came up with the word assets there to encompass, try to encompass everything. Because everything that we own and are responsible for, we should do our best to make safe. That was my intent.
Okay.
So, if you got better word-
That is a tough one, I was just trying to think how I could reword that. I'm like, I just tried to-
And that's where I think I struggled. I was trying not to lose what one point three and one point four originally spoke to. But when you're boiling down words, it's hard not to lose some things.
Like, maybe just in front of it, providing safe township assets or ensuring safe township assets? I'm not saying that that even makes a lot of sense, I'm just kind of throwing it out there.
Others have suggestions for that wording?
I'm thinking-
Providing or ensuring, I don't know.
Safe spaces. Instead of township assets.
Overall, outstanding. Yeah. I say.
You're more of a wordsmith than you're giving your credit.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. You wouldn't want to say mine.
So, are we good with the changing assets to spaces?
Yeah.
I liked your- Assets to what?
Spaces. So, it would read currently would read as suggested, safe township spaces with resources. I liked your addition of insure.
Yeah.
Because if it's our asset or if it's our safe spaces, then we can insure, we can't insure necessarily an MDOT road or something like that, so I think that's good. Code enforcement to original specifications. Help me out with that one.
This is an original one? And I actually put this in Google going, what does exactly that mean? I mean, I know what the intent is. I did not change the language on this one, it came from-
One point three point two.
Yes, one point three point two. Original specifications for all properties, I don't know if that means we have specifications on our properties and we have to stay with that? And I guess I don't understand that.
Or maybe that was meant to, when that building code was written, that it's code enforcement to that particular building code?
That's how I interpreted it.
And because they may have changed and stuff.
But it stays to that code?
Grandfathered in.
Code enforcement, okay, it doesn't say, got you.
So, if it's not repaired, yeah. And I think that might have been the original.
The original thought.
Yeah.
I understand now, yeah.
Wouldn't you want it to be code enforcement to current specifications for all properties?
But if you gotta-
You can't do that.
Because then you gotta upgrade everything.
Yeah, if someone is grandfathered in, you can't change it.
Because you'd have sprinkler systems.
I see, but if I were to go, if I were to go to do, make an addition, then I would, then I would have to bring it to-
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, and I think the original intent of this piece was making sure that we're doing uniform and intentional about code enforcement, right? That's, I think, the original intent of this.
Yeah. And when I first read that, I read, when I first just read it quickly, when I spread properties, I was thinking of our properties exclusively, township properties. And so, now I'm looking at the whole forest, not just the tree, thank you. That helps. I-
Yeah, I'm fine with it, yeah.
As long as we kind of understand what it means now, I think it's good.
Yep, it's excellent, perfect.
So, just recap on this section then. Because if you're okay with it, I can type it back up after this again.
Thank you.
One point three, all residents may enjoy, the rest is the same. That's the top line, right? The rest of that sentence is good.
That's good.
The next change would be one point three point three, ensure safe township spaces with resources, the rest is the same. That's the only changes I have so far, based on what's in front of us.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And just based on previous discussions, purchasing policy was something we talked about in the past. We did not make any decision, if you remember. I put up a little fuss about it, but I'm not, excuse the term, married to it in any way, so I just thought I'd bring that back up since I kind of left that open.
So, unless we're gonna like enforce this and make Mark come up with a purchasing policy and do all the stuff that goes with it, I say take it out.
I'm okay with that.
That's my thought. I understand the intent, don't get me wrong, but I just think that it's very hard to get a policy. And I'd hate to have the manager, you know, kind of have to juggle that around and develop a policy when there's just so many different things that can be impacting it.
I have to agree, I think that, you know, the manager is the one that develops relationships with his vendors and we don't, I don't, I don't think we should have a part in it. I don't think it has to be local.
Let me ask a question, is there any objections to removing this?
No. I think, didn't we-
Go ahead, go ahead.
Didn't we make a change that was for the better when it came to our dumpster service?
That was actually, that was the same vendor, the same vendor, actually.
Yeah, well, okay.
Just lowered their price, yeah.
But, you know.
Yep. There was no local vendor.
That's right.
Yeah.
Well, there was other, there's other people out there, but-
They wouldn't be.
Just based on the conversation, right?
I think I agree with Trustee Smith as far as, the reason, I would love to hold on to that. Being a business owner in this community and used to be a business owner and, man, I want people to come to the business and want people to buy locally. I think with how much Union Township buys, it really ties a manager's hands to have that policy because it's just so much extra work and staff ties their hands, I believe. No matter how much, I want to keep it interesting. Oh, we want to buy everything local and that's what we should do because we want to support our neighbors, right? Almost with the size we are, it's tough to do that.
I think that business, no matter where they're at, has to be competitive and in order to stay afloat. So, if they're competitive, they'll probably get our business anyway.
But does that preclude the board from authorizing a contract or a purchase for somebody that is low? We can take that into consideration on an informal basis, stuff like that. So, there's nothing that precludes us from doing it, it just won't be written into an official policy.
I think we prefer to deal with local people.
Yeah, I definitely would if somebody's, yeah.
Yes.
I would definitely do that.
Under that understanding, I say take it out, though.
All right, so for sake of moving it on, let's just, let's take it out.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay. All right, so, help me out, I'd like to keep us on the stuff we've already discussed on this. Is there something else that in here? I was thinking there's something else, but I can't recall.
I think we might have talked about this before. I'm sorry, I don't mean to backtrack, but the, it's in that one point six or one point five, the new one point five, the very, one point five point one, controlled establishment of potential undesirable businesses. I know at one point in time, we might have had a discussion about this, but what, I know what I think might be an undesirable business. What is that actually?
Well, I, well-
Go ahead, Trustee Smith?
I guess I don't want to speak for the board at the time, but I think the, at that time when this was drawn up, the undesirable businesses were like adult-themed businesses. On, if I remember correctly, and again, I think that was, you know, back in ten. And so, I think that was the thought process. But again, I don't want to speak on behalf of that board at that time, but I think that was the terminology people felt comfortable with, instead of naming a particular, they just went with that.
So, potentially from board to board, the idea of a undesirable business could change.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because like this board may not want marijuana, then another board, ten years from now, may want it.
So, does that need to be in there to not allow or allow something?
I think that's in our zoning policy, isn't it?
It's in our zoning, our master plan.
Yeah.
We also set up other policies, like this board, the previous board decided not to allow dispensaries in Union Township, so there was a conscious effort not to bring that in.
This gives us a broad umbrella. And it's not saying that you're prohibiting, you're just controlling it, right?
Yeah, but I don't know how you're doing that through ends, that's, unless, I mean, isn't that, we already have a policy.
That kind of speaks to, like, the master plan, this is how I interpreted it. I also agree that it was probably speaking to, I can think of an establishment back then when this was probably put in.
Yeah.
And maybe that, that maybe is where that came from. But I also saw it as part of the smart growth, right, is you want to encourage development that is an asset to the township. You don't want to encourage development, encourage, doesn't mean you're gonna stop it. You're just not gonna encourage development that's not an asset to the township, right? And that, to me, is something that's inherent in the master plan, that's inherent in our zoning. And so, this, this end, to me, speaks to how to drive the construction of those items and how our administration then goes about suggesting languages in our master plan and/or zoning, et cetera, et cetera. That's how I interpret it.
I agree with James. I think that it's ambiguous at best.
I mean, I'm comfortable with it being there, but I'm also comfortable with it not being there.
I don't think it says anything.
Wanting to understand, I mean, it's already, we as a board or the planning commission, based on what our book of rules allow and don't allow.
But those allow and don't allow based on the ends helping drive those, right? So, what if we were to extend the language slightly and say, controlled establishment of potentially undeserved, undesirable businesses through smart growth? Then it's qualifying it a little bit.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. That's, that's fine.
I'll go with that.
I like the umbrella, I like the safety net of it personally.
I'm just thinking, you know, so let's, let's just say we have a hundred candy stores, okay? We, I think another candy store would be an undesirable business and that, in my mind, do we really need another candy store? So, does that fall underneath that or does that, I mean, they're allowed to have it?
Yeah, you can't stop that by state law, right? I mean, as long as they meet your zoning and building.
Okay. I mean, I like, I like-
A reasonable example of that, that I, happened a lot in the teens and I think Trustee Smith can probably speak to this and correct me if he thinks I'm off-base on this. But big boxes, we're coming to a lot of townships across Michigan. And some of them were bending over backwards and giving tax breaks and they brought these big boxes in. Mom and pop shops closed and the big box went, see ya, and now they have, they didn't want to pay taxes. So, then they would fight with Michigan Tax Tribunal saying, you can only taxes for what the empty building's worth.
The dark store theory.
Yeah, the dark store. And that really had a negative effect on a lot of communities. And a lot of communities did that despite their master plan, saying, we don't want this, we want smart growth. And I, to me, that's an example of undesirable business, that you're not, you're not selling out the store because of potential short-term gain when the long-term master plan tells you do it differently.
Don't you want to say prevent the establishment instead of controlled establishment?
Because you can't, you can't prevent.
We're getting a lawsuit on that.
But controlled establishment, sounds like you're, you're going to allow some of it.
Well, you, you control like the location, so it's not within five hundred feet of a school or a thousand feet of a school or, you know, things that, like the city has for the marijuana retail. It can only be on the DDA corridors or down, you know, part of the downtown, but it has to be so many five hundred feet, thousand feet away from, you know, schools. So, that would be controlling it through their zoning.
And Trustee Thering's right that that's in our zoning, but to me, this helps drive our zoning.
I like your, your words of smart growth, smart growth.
Smart growth.
I like that. I don't know how anybody else feels, but I like it.
Oh, it ties it in, I like how it ties it in exactly what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I don't know if it changes anything, but I mean, it gives more purpose.
But it also, it kind of refers to this right here, it kind of refers to the master plan, the smart growth. So, it kind of refers to another document in which you can find the controlled growth is found in that. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
We good?
Yep.
So, we're, just to be clear, we're adding-
Through smart growth.
Through smart growth. Or we have, so we simplified some things, taken out something. Let me ask you a question, anything missing? That's always the hardest one, right? Question is easy to take stuff out.
Your stamp of approval.
And I'm gonna go back to a comment that Trustee Smith, I believe it was, back on April twenty-sixth, mentioned is this perception of public reading this, right? And I'm probably not gonna restate what you did very well if it was you, but you spoke to, when you look at the ends, you want to be conscious of how the public's gonna interpret this. Am I misconstruing you?
I think I might have said that.
Well, I regretted.
It did sound bad, so I won't either.
If it was smart, I, I-
I won't either deny or-
If you did, not my apologies, but I remember being said, I thought it was a good point that as I read through it, I'm keep trying to think of my neighbor, if they were to come and say, you know, what are your ends, what are your goals, where do you see the future of the township? Are they gonna get something from this document? Granted, it's meant more internal, but-
Yeah.
Conservative.
So, the other user of this document is, is the organization itself. So, let me, Mr. Stuhl-Dreyer, if I may ask you, of the discussion you heard and the changes that are being proposed, is there anything that's not clear or that you'd like to comment on?
I think there's two things, and one is just to amplify your removal of one point, the new one point five point two. I'm not sure that even belongs in there from a perspective of commerce because we're talking about our internal purchasing, so that's another reason to remove it. The item that you were just speaking to and what I was doing on my phone was trying to look for a synonym for undesirable. And all those are, the ones I saw were worse than undesirable.
Even more undesirable.
Nasty, et cetera. And I looked up the definition of undesirable and I was back to, I wish I had a synonym. So, just may want to, because if you look up the word and you're interested in what your constituents, you know?
Right.
The definition of the word, at least per the dictionary, is maybe a little stronger than the word you want here. And, but I clearly understand the intent. And I think it was most exemplified by Trustee Smith. A marijuana grow facility, desirable, undesirable, who cares? You want control of that, you can allow it, but you, maybe you only want it in the agricultural zone or an industrial zone, something like that. the agricultural zone or an industrial zone, something like that.
Could you do something like, uh, controlled establishment of businesses that do not meet smart growth? Something like that?
How about even just, even simpler, um, just controlled development through smart growth? Cause to me, that smart growth is always kind of implied, you, you try to mitigate the potential for undesirable establishments and encourage desirable establishments.
Well, that makes the whole statement exactly much better for me.
I'm good.
I like that.
Clearer the better, simple better.
Other comments? Alright, so I don't know what I said, though.
Controlled establishments through smart growth, I think.
Controlled establishment of businesses through.
Yes, through, yep.
Establishment or development?
Development, it was development.
I said development.
Okay, no development, sorry.
Said the wrong thing.
I liked it.
Alright, controlled development.
Through smart.
Businesses through smart growth.
And to me, um, smart growth is, is fairly well-defined, it, it, um, there's a lot to it, there's I mean, you go to seminars on smart growth for communities, right, it's, it's, it's an intended way to build a community. Does that help you from a implementation perspective?
Perfect.
Get rid of undesirable. Said get rid of undesirable.
I couldn't find a synonym, I thought I've got the definition.
That's hilarious.
Um, alright, so new things, we're just gonna throw something out, and, and this came from a series of conversations I've had with various residents over the last few months on different things, and, and it's always different. But part, part of what I've learned that I is helpful for me to help our residents, is to help them navigate local government. You know, w- we kinda learned how some of this works, but a lot, most people don't have any clue what goes on here, they don't understand that, you know, who to contact, when they're unhappy with something, or they, whatever it is. Um, and so it seems that a lot of my time with our residents tends to be in just walking them through the process. This is who you need to talk to, if it were me, here's the questions I would ask, um, and then informing them. So, I, I don't know if you have that same experience, is that?
I have had a little bit, but I mean, I I mean, I can vaguely tell them who to contact, but I mean, you, you don't know for sure, a lot of times, you know? You say, well, if you don't get an answer from so-and-so, then I would call.
If and don't, call the manager. Let, let the managers decide who gets it all.
So, where I was leading to with this, um, and, and this is not well-baked, just, it's just been in my mind lately, is education of our public, so that they know what resources are available to them, and I don't know what that even means. And maybe it, it doesn't have to be that concrete, because ends are fairly nebulous in some ways, but, um, broad, maybe is a better term. But to me, educating our public when they need it, so that they can take advantage of what's here at this township for them is important to me.
I think that's the same thing that I just talked about with the cities having the same kind of questions on how to get to their constituents the same way, here, here we are, right back at the same place. Yeah, um, I don't know what that, what that entails. How, how to fix that, I don't know, but I think, I don't, I just, I don't think we're the only ones feeling that, that's for sure right now.
Well, if I, okay, but if I'm a consumer, and I don't know who to call, I'm calling the main number, and I'm gonna ask them. Well, yeah, that's what I do, I, I don't know who to call at the hospital, I call the hospital main number, say, I need this, who I'd talk to, can you transfer me? I mean.
Maybe because my, I have supervisor at my title, but I get a lot of calls from the public where and, and many of them, I just, I'll loop Mark, Mark in, fill Mark in, and say, I talked to so-and-so, here's where they're at. Mark takes over, I just say, let me know if you're having struggles along the way, I'll jump in and help you. So, and, and maybe that's part of why I field a lot of those calls.
Got it. I don't know how we would address that, what are we gonna have, class?
Your existing policies be, speak to that a bit, I think, if you look at one point, one point two. And I think.
That really does address it.
I don't wanna put words in the supervisor's mouth, but it may be that
Yes.
you're wanting us to make sure we're activating that statement, if there is such a word.
You know, and.
So for instance, on our website, on our webpage, we've, we've made a concerted effort to put more information on there, not just words, but flow charts and things that can help a constituent understand the process they're about to go through. Which is an attempt to help them understand how things are done around here, but I, I, like I say, I don't wanna.
I, I think you're right, I think it does speak to that, and maybe I just wasn't tying it to that, I did notice on the website yesterday or today, a flow chart, I think it was for site plans, and it was a flow chart of all the stages and steps. Was that what it was, for site plans? Yeah, and I thought, oh, that's new, or I hadn't seen it before, at least.
But in many cases, the, the inquiry or the particular situation, they're all unique. And so it's really getting the requestor interfacing with the right place, the right person in Township Hall.
And sometimes it's not even this organization, they should be contacting MDOT, or they should be contacting the city, or the road commissioner, somebody else, it's just kinda could be a million different things.
And, and I will say that a lot of the calls I get, I end up speaking to just that, oh, it's not township you wanna deal with, but here's the agencies you wanna work with, and I know this much about it, the, the system, but.
So it's easier, sometimes it's just easier to call you than to look online to see, you know, seriously, and I'm not, you know, but I think some people just say, oh, I call, you know, Supervisor Milky's number, and, you know, I don't have to look for it.
And I, I, that's one part I love about the job, I really enjoy that part, but, um, I just, I just know it's for people that don't know local, local government, it's, it's a quagmire to get involved sometimes, and it's not because the system is trying to be that way. Sometimes they don't understand that, that the, the roadblocks that are in their way are actually because they're state regulations versus what the township's imposing.
Sorry, I'm over here laughing because you say you're not a wordsmith and then throw out something like quagmire.
I've been waiting all week to use that word. Alright, I'm, I'm comfortable with the language that's there, it was important to me that we, it's something you continually strive for, is provide opportunities to have, uh, information at the fingertips of residents and businesses.
We could also include something instructional with our survey questions, too. Like even a little flashcard and how to interact with your government, you know, I don't know.
Call Trusty.
Mr. Stooldryer, do you, does your, you or your staff get, um, people coming to the community looking to purchase a home? And they come in and need information, I mean, do they actually come here, or do you get phone, phone calls?
Phone calls.
In regards to something like that, and when, I guess what I'm getting at is, is there a place? I know on our website, we have all the information we need, but if there was a quick link to, um, you know, for, I'm just gonna use example, if, if you're moving to Union Township, information. You click on that and it just gives you everything, like schools in the area, who you contact for your water, who you contact for your sewer, who you contact for what, you know what I mean, just what we have in the area. So somebody from not this area could click on that and go, holy cow, this is what they've got.
That's cool.
I believe it's on the right side of the webpage, there's a link or a, a heading called Community Information. And you can begin to click on some of those things, and, and if you do, you'll understand or read about the various schools that are in the area, the various universities, various hospitals, parks, whether the township or city.
And you do have a specific one that's specifically new residents, I got it pulled up right here, it says new residents.
I show you how much I spend on their website, okay? But that's, maybe that's where we as a board should start referencing our, you know. There's only so much we can do, and really, we shouldn't necessarily get all, all involved with a residence.
Details.
Right, and let them work through it, and if they have issues, then they can come back and talk to us, but at the end of the day, I mean, the manager and his staff need to be able to do their jobs without us interfering.
Yeah.
I mean, I do have to.
Thank you.
I do have to compliment, um, the manager and staff on the, on the website, I think it's very informative. If you look at other ones, it just seems to take you all over the place and stuff, this one seems to be uh, done very well and it's updated. That's, you know, and that may sound simple, but not having it updated, uh, that's, uh, you know, it's kind of a big thing sometimes, but I just wanna commend.
And I appreciate you mentioning that, cause the entire organization, um, I know Jennifer in Ms. Smith's area, and Amy and Tara have spent a lot of time on that website over the last couple of years.
Yeah.
Reorganizing, updating content, removing content, adding new pictures. Get, taking them down, putting new ones up, so it's not the same picture if you looked at it five years ago.
That's a picture of the red barn out there.
That's, uh, that's, that's my family's barn.
Is it? Put it back up.
I'll, I'll comment to you. I, I've noticed it too, and that, that flow chart was an example of something that I saw the last couple of days, where I'm like, oh, that's new to me at least. Um, cause I was poking around for certain things, but I always see new stuff there when I'm.
All our water sewer specifications are on the website for builders to take down and.
Very professional.
One point, one point two is being taken care of through our website, then.
Yeah.
With.
One of the ways.
With the ability to call if they need to, but I mean, that's a start.
So, also with that, and maybe this is done intentionally, but in one point, one point two and one point two, point one, is there a reason for the different spacing in residence and diverse from the rest of the page? That's just me, huh?
It stands out.
Okay, I, like I said, it may have been intentional, but.
It is.
Oh, it just, the, the spacing is different.
I didn't mess with that.
I just.
Sometimes word processing software does that.
Depends on the formatting.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just thought I'd.
It does it, yeah.
Check to see if it, cause every time I look at the page, those both just pop, so.
And on one point, the new one point five heading, it says Union, and then a big space Township. I didn't spend time with, with formatting, really.
Okay. Sorry, it was just a question, me being nitpicky.
Alright, so where are we at board with the ends?
Good.
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 I like what we have.
I'm good.
Great job, thank you.
Wasn't easy. I struggle with words, and AI wrote it all, so.
Well, now that you got that, can you, um, help them with the updates on the website, it sounds like they.
Do, do we need any formal action on this? Uh, I'll bring it back. Not yet.
Not yet.
I'll bring it back with the final edits. Did you have something that not yet, that I'm not picking up on?
Well, when, when the board does take formal action, you'll want to have, I would imagine, the final clean copy. So it's just clear what everybody's voting on.
So I will, um, this one I will send, I intentionally didn't send this out, cause I didn't want to spur debate. And I thought the changes were minor enough that we could digest them here. This time I'll send it out, um, I think it's safe from Open Meetings Act. If you see a typo or a formatting that you'd like modification on, I can do that. But avoid the, if you wanna add something or modify, uh, more than just a word kinda thing, right, where it's changing the intent of it. But otherwise, I'll send it out for review, so that next time we can bring that back and we can expedite approval from this board. Sound good?
Perfect.
That sounds great.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, moving on, that takes us through our new business tonight, I wasn't sure how long the ends were gonna take. We did good. That brings us to item twelve on the agenda, extended public comment. Extended public comments restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. If you choose to, uh, address the public, please state your name and address for the record, and we'll open up extended public comment at eight P M. And see no one from the audience coming forward, no one connected virtually, we'll close extended public comment at eight P M. Mr. Stooldryer, manager's comments, you have the floor.
Thank you, and just a couple, I do wanna make the board aware that the refund has been made to the uh, appeal applicant from the last meeting, so that should be closed. The building permit has been issued, and it's in the hands of the county for the county jail. And in that regard, I'd really like to acknowledge, uh, Director Smith's work with two things that were, um, that we were, the township was really active in navigating basically on behalf of the county, and that was securing an easement they needed. And also navigating with Eagle as it relates to the sewer permit. And I know a lot of time and effort and dialogue keeping the county controller informed. Ms. Smith did a great job on that, and so the county should be off and running and being able to do what they need to do to put in a new, uh, sheriff's complex. And then finally, the fitness pad, uh, the fitness court out in McDonald Park. Weather permitting, next week, the concrete pad should be poured. We'll have to wait a bit of time for that to cure all the way before we can start adding and bolting equipment to it. But that's on the very, uh, near-term horizon. And then also part of that larger contract is the sidewalk around Township Hall. That and the connection between Jonathan Lane and K Avenue. That'll be phase two, I'll call it, phase one is getting the pad in at the park. And then the other two will come behind that. We, they had a, uh, pre-construction meeting yesterday, so that's moving along. Thank you.
To follow up to that, um, can I ask the board what they think about like a ribbon cutting for this facility over here? And it might be an opportunity to get the press to actually cover us.
Maybe, maybe we'll have some community come.
Make the community aware that this is there.
I held that up at the meet, at the B O C meeting.
Aw, thank you.
And I talked about the artwork competition, too.
Would you consider that as a?
There, there will be, and I, I will keep you informed and engaged in, to the extent participating. I'm sure somebody will have a few words to say, but there will be an event. It's just too early to schedule yet, and it's very possible because of the scheduling, for instance, the artist is gonna be out at the area for a bit of time. So it's possible you could have the thing, the court operational. But then a little bit later, you'd have a formal ribbon cutting, which is not uncommon.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep.
A soft opening and then.
I just had a question on list station one, is that progressing as scheduled? Uh, I don't, with Pickard Street being closed and stuff like that, I don't get to see the status of it, so is that coming along as scheduled, and everything going good?
The construction's going very well, um, we're having some issues with Consumers Energy, who is having issues getting ground transformers. So they pushed that back once again to October. who is having issues getting ground transformers, so they pushed that back once again to October. So, we will have a delay there, we are looking at other options, such as an aerial, but that's not ideal, I don't know. We, we just were informed of this early this week, that that was, that was being pushed up. That was our, our main delay, we did have some equipment delay after we awarded the contract, and we had equipment delay, mainly the pumps, and now, and then Consumers was the second piece of that delay, and now we've been informed that that's delayed again. And it's our understanding, we're not the only ones that are feeling it.
Yeah.
No, you're not.
Thank you.
Otherwise, the project's going well, I mean, the contractor's doing a nice job, and Pickard hasn't impacted it at all, so.
Go in the back door through Enterprise and get it.
Alright, any more questions from what manager presented? Alright, final Board member comment, trustee Thering.
I am well set, thank you, sir.
Clerk Cody. Trustee Smith.
I just want to thank the manager again for sending out the email regarding the new voting, things that are going through the State House and Senate. I didn't get a chance to read them yet, sorry, but thank you for sending it out, or give me something interesting to read over the weekend.
I agree, that was awesome to get in the email, thank you very much, Mr. Stooldryer. And, well, I'll just tell you all, my mom had emergency open-heart surgery, she didn't want to wait for the date she was scheduled, and so she's doing alright, she's at home.
Good.
But I would like to thank the rain gods for some rain, because the farmers were really sweating it, I think, and so I'm hoping for some more rain this weekend. Other than that, I'm good.
We are, too.
Everybody, right?
Yeah.
Get the irrigation down.
Crispy grass.
I turned mine off tonight, you know, so we're up-
One million diners.
Yeah, exactly, a couple thousand gals less.
I just have one thing, I've waited a long, long time for what happened today with Governor, today or yesterday, I forget when she signed the bill for hands-free, no more phones in the cars. This is a big thing, we see it all over. Being on the fire department 20 years, first responder for a number of years, can't tell you how many distracted drivers we peeled out of the ditch, or glove box, or whatever it was. I think this is a great law, I'm sure you guys have talked about it here at the township with, and already have, probably no hands-free in your vehicles, but man, I, I, everywhere I drive back and forth from Mount Pleasant to Midland, twice, two, three times a day, I can't even tell you, I bet you, five, maybe even more, out of 10 people are on their phone as they're going down the road when I either go by them or they go by me, so. I think this is a great law, I hope everybody abides by it, and I just thought it should be mentioned tonight for everybody to be aware of this and be safe on the road, I want my kids to come home.
Save lives.
Save lives, yup, absolutely. Good bill.
Yes.
That's it, for me, thank you.
I, I only have one thing, I'm just going to mention it again, I'm planting seed, I planted it once, I'm going to sow the seed a second time, I guess. Back in the last Board of Review meeting, there was discussion, so this will be the March normal Board of Review, there was discussion of holding a training for our property owners on, on how to appeal their properties, and this was done by the township years ago, and my recollection of that was that it was very well-received. You know, my concern is, I haven't talked to our manager about this, so I don't want to impose additional resources necessarily on our new assessor, and I think at that time in March, the Board of Review, there's some good people on that Board, were willing to put it on themselves. And so I just want a reaction on how you feel about that, because July, we had agreed that we would talk about that again. And like I said, I hadn't had a chance to talk to our manager about it, because I want his input on it as well, but I just want to throw that idea out there, because I don't want to encourage our Board of Review on that if there isn't support from the organization, does that make sense?
I strongly support the idea, as long as the staff have the resources to be able to do it as well. So that's why I want to make sure before I say 100% yes.
I'm sensitive to that, too.
You know, I want to make sure that the manager can provide the staff.
And I, to be honest, I had concerns during the discussion, we didn't get real far in the discussion, it was agreed that we would table that and talk about it further later. But at that point, our manager wasn't there in the discussion, and I wasn't wanting to put that on the assessor, brand-new assessor, and that's where the discussion came, that they felt they could do the, do it by themselves, because they're fairly well-educated, they go through a lot of training for that. I just don't know what liabilities that has, so I want to talk to you more about that later another time, unless you have comments you'd like now, but I wanted to plant the seed.
I recall that discussion, so maybe it was through looking at a video post-meeting, but I believe I mentioned that to the Finance Director for the new assessor to mention, too. Okay.
I, I may have brought, brought it up to you, I forgot if I did.
It's a good idea, there's no reason we can't do it. You know, we'll check with the assessor's priority, you know, it's done one or two of those, and I would much rather have our assessor do it than the Board of Review members.
Agreed.
I didn't want to make that assumption without getting that confirmation from you.
And it's appropriate, or applicable, I should say, for the March Board of Review, so we don't need to worry about that for July or December Board's review.
Correct.
So we have some, I think we have enough time I'll get with staff, but I would imagine we would have enough time to develop something, you know, to be held early next year, because that's when you'd want to hold it.
Yeah, just before tax time, before appeal time.
Assessment notices go out in February, so that's the timeframe.
Right, and, and I think the Board of Review's perspective was just wanting to have this discussion further in July, they meet again in December, and that's their last formal meeting before, really, the, the whole March kicks-off process, so. Alright, awesome, I'm done, happy to entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion adjourned.
Motion by Rice, port by Brown, all in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, we are adjourned. Thanks, all.